Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for coming today. This is a study session of the Minneapolis City Council on the issue of housing stability. Study sessions are a chance for council members to come and hear from our staff about a deep dive into a policy issue that's important in our city. And we all know that the issue of housing affordability and stability in our neighborhoods is a huge issue for many of our constituents. Today, we have a lengthy and thorough presentation from an amazing team of staff who've been working really hard over the past many years on a number of issues related to housing stability. We have so much to cover that I think I will just jump right in with that. We may see council members coming and going as their schedule allows. Again, this is a special meeting of the city council. It's not a regularly scheduled committee meeting or anything. So I know this is something that is really important to all of my colleagues. Many of us have been working on housing issues in one way or another throughout this term. So if anyone couldn't make it today, I know that they've been talking with staff. They'll be able to watch the meeting online, as will members of the public. So we'll start with Ms. Brennan from our housing department.
Great, thank you. So I will be presenting today. I'm Andrea Brennan, Director of Housing Policy and Development. And I will be presenting today along with my colleagues, Michael Peterson, Economic Research Analyst in the Housing Division of CPED, and Brian Schaefer, Principal Project Coordinator in the Long Range Planning Division of CPED. Michael is going to start out presenting data showing Minneapolis' housing trends. These data will be disaggregated by race and ethnicity, and these data will show residential patterns of racial and ethnic integration and segregation. Brian will provide information on the historical narrative on fair housing issues and present data on the city's housing supply. I will present information about a recently completed Fair Housing Study. And this Fair Housing Study will identify eight fair housing issues as well as 10 goals that the city should consider in addressing these issues. We have about an hour's worth of presentation content here, which should leave time for discussion at the end. We're happy to take questions throughout the presentation, but there are 10 specific goals that we want to make sure that we get all the way through. So at some point, we need to speed things up. Sorry, here's the agenda that I just explained. So I, Michael and Brian and I are presenting here, but I want to acknowledge all of the staff that have provided input into both the content here and are also very key staff in the work that we're also going to be discussing here. So I'm not going to list all of their names here, but you can see them. And they will also be here, they're here, and will be available as a resource to answer questions during the discussion period. I would also like to acknowledge that Greg Russ, Executive Director of the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, and Kyle Hansen, Director of the Housing Choice Voucher Program, are here as well. MPHA is a key partner. They provide 6,000 units of public housing and 5,000 housing choice vouchers in our city. And the Fair Housing Study didn't just look at city policies around fair housing issues. It also looked at the policies of public housing authorities around the metropolitan area, including MPHAs. So before we jump into the data, we're going to tell you the trends that the data are going to show. Number one, we are growing faster than we have since 1950. So while that is a desirable thing, it is putting tremendous amount of pressure on housing affordability in our city. Number two, our population of color is growing faster than the population as a whole. And three, for a growing number of low-income residents, incomes are not keeping pace with housing cost increases. And this is especially true for people of color. Four, we are now a majority renter population in the city. This is something that has shifted relatively recently. Our population is now mostly renter. Five, we have less affordable housing than we did 15 years ago, and production is not keeping pace with loss. Six, racial disparities persist in all aspects of housing. And finally, there are geographic patterns of income and racial disparities, and these disparities are influenced by past discriminatory policy. I also want to point out here that these are not issues that Minneapolis is uniquely facing. These are regional trends. The loss of affordability in particular is something that is happening on a regional basis. And these are also national trends. So peer cities that are also experiencing economic growth are experiencing very, very similar trends to what we are here in Minneapolis. So with that, I will hand it over to Michael Peterson.
Thank you, Andrea. So I'm going to dig into some of the data underlying the trends that Andrea just discussed. And I'll start here just with Minneapolis' population. We are projected to grow through 2040. The council says we're going to add 40,000 more people and 20,000 more households by 2040. Looking at our population by race, the city's population of color has grown at a faster rate than the population as a whole. On the chart here, you can see the blue line represents total population, population of color is represented by the green line. In 1990, around 2 in 10 residents indicated a race other than white, not Hispanic. And as of 2010, this number had increased to 4 in 10 and is projected to continue to grow. Looking at household income, income overall for the city is stable, but disparities persist underneath the citywide figure. White and Asian incomes increased since 2000, while black and American Indian households saw decreases in household income over that same timeframe. Now, just to frame some of those numbers in a regional context, median household income for Minneapolis is around $50,000, which is about 60% of the regional median income measure. Along with that, the Minneapolis poverty rate is about twice as high as what the region sees. And additionally, people of color have a smaller share of the regional population, about a quarter. Looking at sort of shifts in owner-renter status, around late 2000s, renters actually overtook owners to become the majority household in the city. So now looking at owner-renter status by race, what you see here are, the green portion of these bars represent the portion of the racial group that is renter, and the blue bar represents the portion that own. White, non-Hispanic households are the only households group for which the majority are owner, and large majorities of the other broad racial groups are renters. So now we take all of that homeownership data and roll that up into a homeownership gap. So what you see here on the left, Minneapolis; on the right, the Twin Cities metro. The dark blue bar is the share of white, non-Hispanic households who own their home. The lighter blue is the share of people of color who own. And while rates of ownership for both are higher at the regional level, the gap is almost identical, 36%, 38%. Looking at changes in household incomes and costs for renters and owners, owner households as a group are largely better off than they were in 2000. Increased incomes and stabilized housing costs. On this chart here, owners are on the left. The blue bar represents changes in income since 2000. The gray represents changes in housing costs. The renter picture is very different. Compared with those who are renting in 2000, today's renters face reduced incomes and increasing rents. 11% increase in housing costs and a 14% decrease in income. So that's all part of a larger trend of a loss of affordability. So what you see here on the left is in 2000, the green portion represents the portion of the city's housing stock that was affordable to a family at 50% of area median income. For reference, in 2015, that was about $45,000 for a family of four. Fast forward a decade later on the right, an estimated 38% of the city's housing stock is affordable at that 50% of AMI level. Important to note here, too, that despite the city producing or preserving nearly 9,000 units affordable at this level over that time, we still have this decrease. But this loss would have been more dramatic without the work that the city has already done. Now, these are those same estimates, but shown for all metro communities. The map you're looking at shows share of housing stock affordable at 50% at AMI, with a higher share being a darker shade. If you'll notice, Minneapolis, again, around that 36% estimate. Looking at this, you may want to kind of hang your hat on the notion that we have a high share of affordability relative to other metro communities. But just as a reminder, we're going to add nearly twice as more people and households by 2040 than any other community in the metro. So we're facing very different conditions than the other communities you're seeing here.
We have a question from Councilmember Glidden.
Yes.
So sorry, I'm noticing that St. Paul has, if I read your map right, has a much higher percentage of housing stock that remains affordable. And can you just talk about that a little bit? Is that because just the market is dictating that those properties? I'm assuming that's what that means, is that the market is just different in St. Paul versus Minneapolis? But are there other things in the market that are dictating this percent of share affordable, like how much subsidy or other things that are going into production or preservation of units?
Chair Benner, Councilmember Glidden, I'd like to dig into that further. One challenge with this data in particular is that at relatively low levels, the reliability breaks down. These are survey estimates. So actually, the difference between Minneapolis and St. Paul does nearly fall into that sort of margin of error range. So it's difficult to dig in and figure out what the difference is. But I'd like to look at data sort of additional to what I used for this analysis to answer those questions. I've not prepared that today. I'd be happy to follow up if that remains of interest.
Council President also has a question.
Thank you. I think, you know, one of the things over the years, St. Paul's values, a home in St. Paul that would be, you know, X square feet, we've always heard that, is more valuable or, not more valuable, valued higher than the same home, you know, typically in Minneapolis, which has some effect. Can you go back a couple of slides to this affordability, homeownership versus rental?
Yes. Is that here?
Yes, thank you. And, you know, it seems to me that one of the factors in this would be that this is 2000, where we had a huge decrease in values of home ownership because of the foreclosure crisis. Was there an equal or a similar influence on multifamily that happened in that foreclosure crisis? Did as many, or, you know, was the impact greater on, like, single-family homes in the foreclosure crisis than multifamily properties?
Chair Benner, Council President Johnson, again, something I didn't prepare for this, a good question, something I'd probably like to dig into more beyond this presentation and follow-up. That's a good question.
Because it, I mean, it looks like, yes, isn't that great, housing, you know, values for single-family are, you know, homeownership are more affordable than rental, but people lived through a long period where their houses were underwater and, you know, we had probably almost 10 years of values where people lost at least a third of their property value.
And I should say, while the owner data are a little noisy, so to speak, for instance, if there's an owner who owns a home in 2000, and I purchased that seven years later, the conditions under which I purchased it are different.
Sure.
But we did see, I know I use the word stabilized housing costs for owners here because around the recession, there was an increase in housing costs for owners, too. You saw that somewhat masked by this timeframe. But again, by the time we get to 2014, all of that is basically back to where we were in 2000.
Yep, thanks.
So again, as a reminder, we're adding people faster than really anybody in the And that's putting stress on rental market. What you're looking at here is a Minnesota Housing Partnership analysis of apartment sales from 2010 to 2015. What they found was more than 10,000 units in Minneapolis were sold over this five-year period in 355 apartment building sales. The flip side of this was at the end of that sale, a 56% per-unit increase in the sales price and increased rents. And there was also sort of a qualitative aspect of their research that showed what you might suspect with increasing rents, which is displacement for people that used to live in those units before the sale. I'd now like to move to talk about cost burdened households and sort of who experiences it. Likely familiar to many people in the room, but a cost burdened household is one spending 30% or more of its household income on housing. And severely cost burdened are those spending 50% or more. Nearly half of Minneapolis renters are cost burdened, and the majority of those cost burdened are severely cost burdened, spending 50% of their income or more on housing. Additionally, renters represent three out of four cost burdened households and severely cost burdened households in the city. And as Andrea mentioned, this is not happening in Minneapolis in isolation. I looked at, I didn't prepare for a slide here, but I looked at our metro and compared it to 11 peer metros that are similar sort of in size and a few other factors. While area median income for those metros varies widely, San Francisco is over 100,000, a place like Phoenix is more like 60,000, the percentage of renters that are cost burdened did not go anywhere outside of 45% to 50%. This is happening very similarly in other metros regardless of sort of the income distribution. So moving to sort of who's more cost burdened within that cost burdened number, you're looking at sort of household types by tenure, owner-renter status. So you see the green bar here represents owners within the family type, or the household type, excuse me, and the blue bar represents renters. Small and elderly families are the least likely to be cost burdened, and ownership reduces cost burden for all household types with the exception of elderly people not living with a relative. I'm looking at cost burden by race. Homeownership reduces the likelihood of cost burden for most groups. This is a common trend, but disparities remain. 45% of black owners are cost burdened compared with just 27% of white owners. Should note, too, for American Indian households, 1 in 2 are cost burdened regardless of owner-renter status.
Could you go back to the map that showed this trend? I just want to underscore one of the points that you're making here, which is that when we see these sales of buildings, it's often resulting in significant rent increases, up to even double the rent that people have been paying for a long time in older buildings. And that combined with cost burdened status, or the fact that people are already living in housing that exceeds what they should be paying in order to have enough food for, enough money for food and other basic necessities, that combines to mean that we're seeing significant displacement in these neighborhoods where we're seeing high concentrations of property sales. Because again, said more simply, the renters who are living in these buildings already can barely make ends meet, and they're not able to even sustain a 10% rent increase, much less a 100% or doubling of their rent. So I just wanted to kind of underscore that trend that we're seeing that the data, I think, is showing. Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks. Just on this map again, I was curious if we know any information about those property owners that did sell their properties? I know that I've heard in other presentations, I think, from the Assessors Office, and maybe this was also in the Minnesota Housing Partnership Report, I can't remember, but that we're seeing more national buyers of multifamily properties, and I'm not sure how that enters in. Just curious, you know, what did we know about why they sold? Is it, you know, a certain type of owner that maybe owns only a few properties, and they're looking to, you know, they are looking to, you know, make money on their investment? Or, you know, what are the things that are going on to prompt the sales in this short amount of time?
Chair Benner, Councilmember Glidden, that is absolutely an aspect of the MHP report. I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak, but it's definitely a part of it, and we could pull it up, and I could follow up on that. But I don't want to misrepresent someone else's research on that front, but that was absolutely an aspect of something they found and explored in the report.
Which is an aspect? That there's national buyers?
Yes.
Yes, okay. But my question was, what do we know about why, are there any things that we know about why these sales are happening, or kind of the points that are, you know, just so that helps us understand then, are there other alternatives for purchasing the properties once they come available and kind of how that works? That's where I'm kind of going with that.
Right. Chair Benner.
I do know that it's true that they're saying the national market is, or the national buyers are buying more multifamily properties and...
Chair Benner, Councilmember Glidden, again, that is something, a part of that report. I just, I don't, I can't speak to it right at this moment, but something we can definitely explore.
Okay, thank you. Because I think that goes to kind of what are the solutions that we believe may be effective in helping to change the environment, not necessarily on sales, but how many properties are able to be preserved at an affordable rate.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This cannot possibly be totally accurate, because I've worked on two projects that were sold in my ward that are not on this map. So this probably is the tip of the iceberg in terms of what we know about, which is why advance notice is so important. I mean, here, we don't, I don't see the Alden on here as an example, or 1515, both of which sold this year. So I think there's probably more that we're unaware of.
What's that?
I believe this map goes to 2015. So to your point, I think in the last couple of years, there's significantly more, I know it might work to...
Chair Benner, Councilmember Goodman, I also point out that they relied on sort of a proprietary dataset that I haven't had the opportunity to dig into. And when, the nice thing about publicly available datasets that I relied on for most of this presentation is we kind of get regular updates to it, we know where it comes from, and it's hard to sort out if things kind of fall through the cracks or not. But good observation. So I'd like to speak to geographic component of cost burden and some of the other trends we talked about. So first, just a note on areas of concentrated poverty. This map represents the areas of concentrated poverty in the metro. There are 112 areas of concentrated poverty, most of which are in Minneapolis and St. Paul. Here's that same map from Minneapolis. Half of the tracks, census tracts, excuse me, in Minneapolis are areas of concentrated poverty. And a driving factor here is that difference between the city and metro incomes. On the map here, a track shaded in orange is an area of concentrated poverty, and an orange, with an orange outline, represents an area of concentrated poverty where the population is also at least 50% people of color. So I brought those up only to introduce this, which is sort of cost burden in and out of areas of concentrated poverty. What you're looking at here, on the left, you have renters; on the right, you have homeowners. And the takeaway here is that cost burden increases for both renters and homeowners in areas of concentrated poverty, and increases even further in areas of concentrated poverty, So the folks over at KIRA, the University of Minnesota, took this notion of cost burden and used it to analyze where in Minneapolis a typical renter household headed by different racial groups could live without being cost burdened. The first row of maps show, compares median income values to median rents in 2000, and the bottom row shows that same information for 2014. To look at sort of the first column there, in 2000, areas where the typical black household could afford median rent were scarce. They were concentrated mostly in Phillips and North, but by 2014, the typical black household needed to leave the city entirely to avoid cost burden. The second column there shows same information for Hispanic-Latino households. The change is actually even more dramatic for them. They could afford to live in most areas of Minneapolis in 2000, but would likely be cost burdened living anywhere outside of North and Phillips in 2014. Finally, the second column of maps there shows the same information for white, non-Hispanic households. What's of note here is that this effect is not isolated to households of color, portions of South and Southwest were not affordable in the typical white family in 2014. But it's clear from these maps, these households still do have the most housing choice of any racial group here.
Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I mean, I just wanted to pause on this because I think this is some of the most dramatic information. It just sort of lays the context of the importance of the solutions that need to continue to be developed to work on affordability of housing. I actually had kind of an early version of this information presented a few months ago in a constituent meeting. I do a regular constituent meeting, and so we had an early version of this presented. And to be able to look at this map and essentially say there are no properties in the entire city of Minneapolis that are affordable to the black families with an average income of, you know, whatever, for the average income, and then kind of down the line for the Hispanic or Latino families, and then are we a city that essentially is only affordable to white families? So I just wanted to pause and just say this is hugely impactful information. It was a new way to see the information that I think we had seen in a kind of big-picture way, kind of hearing these big-picture statistics, but to kind of see this in the maps over a period of time, I think, really, at least for me and others that I know had seen this information prior to today. Anyway, it just really creates that picture of what is the city that we have today compared to the city even of a few years ago? And then what are we trying to do to impact that city through our policy and resource solutions?
Chair Benner, Councilmember Glidden, I also just comment that this, you know, the most recent analysis we have here is to 2014. We're now 2017. These data get dusty before we even get to look at them, much less since the analysis was done. And so if you look at how rapidly this changed, that's not hard to imagine what we might be looking like once we get newer data that represents where we are now. An additional element here is sort of the universe of legally binding affordable units. So what you're looking at here is a map in which each dot represents an address with a legally binding affordable unit or units overlaid on that ACP map I showed you earlier. So there's this map, and here's that same map, but now those dots are overlaid with areas shaded as a measure of gentrification between 2000 and 2014. Let's go back so you can observe this again here.
And Council President has a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So how are these legal, when you say legally binding, what programs are you talking about?
Chair Benner, Council President Johnson, this is, the source of this data is Housing Link. And they do try great resource for us, which is sort of combining, anytime there's a result of an affordable unit from state-level involvement, county involvement, city involvement, they try to match all that data together, which is something that doesn't happen oftentimes. You know, I can handle what CPED has produced, for instance, but if we didn't have a hand in creating an affordable unit, I wouldn't have good data on that, save for Housing Link's Stream's dataset. So they really try to make it a catch-all for any kind of transaction where there's a legally binding affordable unit at the end.
Is this individual, is the circle an individual property?
Yes. It's, so we have data at the address level where we can say, yes, an affordable unit's there, or affordable units. It's difficult to say at that address how many and at what level, but at a higher level, at sort of the project level, if you will, we're able to speak to how many units and at what level. So we're somewhat limited on the data in terms of what we can say at this level, but I wanted to just throw these on a map to describe that, well, we might be seeing a clustering of affordable units in areas of concentrated poverty. There are also areas that are changing. So these investments might actually represent ways of mitigating displacement that either is currently happening or could happen in the future.
Okay, I'm just going to make the point here that Section 8 program can't be reflected in this dot map. Because I have, I'm thinking in my head, thousands, thousands of Section 8 units in my ward, and it's not reflected here.
I'm nearly certain that's correct.
That's right. Councilmember Glidden?
And, you know, that's a good point, although I will say that, so there's, of course, two ways that I understand that, I'm no expert on describing this, but with the, there's the place-based Section 8 vouchers, and maybe that is something that could or should be reflected in the map. But then there is essentially the voucher program, which doesn't in the end affect, is the property itself affordable? It just says that you can take your voucher and utilize that to try to, with that voucher, make that market rent more affordable to you if you qualify for that voucher. So in the end, I think it doesn't belong on the map, but it belongs on maybe something else where we could map and kind of... where we could map and kind of say, how are people trying to utilize the few tools out there to them? And, and to your point, both because of discrimination in the market, I would say, but also market rents, which essentially make the, the voucher not use, not so usable in, in the majority of the city, then you're having one of those very few tools to make properties affordable, being utilized in very few areas of the city.
Could I ask, do you know either, you know, altogether or for each individual property, when these units expire and turn to market rate units?
Chair Bender, that's one challenge of the data that I would love to actually further work with Housing Link to refine. It's actually specifically called out in the AI that we work with them on this data set. They're able to sort of estimate, an estimated first date of expiration. The challenge being, a number of funding sources could go into creating an affordable unit. It's not always clear, based on what they're able to compile, what that is. So we have a rough estimate of where we might first cross that threshold, but it's not really something we can wrap our arms around with what we have.
Because I know one of our big challenges from previous presentations is that so many of our subsidized units are expiring and turning to market rates, therefore, we're losing a lot of subsidized units. And then, and this is not meant to be a quiz, but I am curious if you know the total number of housing units in the city? And then, so then, like, what percentage of our total housing units are subsidized affordable? And if you, if, again, if you don't know right now, we could follow up, but.
I don't have the unit count of, well, so in this data set, it recognizes about 25,000 units that are legally binding.
It looks like Andrea made.
There we are. Excellent. So, yeah, about 25,000 compared with what Andrea just provided. 190,000? 195,000, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. One final thing I want to call out is the Minneapolis Innovation Team's work analyzing evictions and court data. Two major findings from their initial analysis that I know is ongoing and probably has, probably have much more to say on this topic. But two major findings were, a majority of evictions, the vast majority, were the result of non-payment of rent. And the sort of sample of cases they looked at, about two months and $2,000 stand between tenants and evictions. So when you look at this map that shows, you know, an estimated nearly half of renter households in these two North Minneapolis zip codes experienced an eviction filing in the past three years, and compare that map to some of the other maps I've shown you with cost burden, incomes, things like that, a good takeaway here is it's, it's likely that we're dealing with people who are not just trying to avoid paying their rent. These are people that are actually just struggling to, and the finish line here is not so far off. So I just wanted to, I didn't want to leave this presentation without calling out the evictions work they're doing, that's ongoing.
And just a note on this, I mean, I think it's astounding to just note and highlight that nearly half of our renter households in North Minneapolis have, have experienced a filing in the past three years. And my understanding is that even if you're not ultimately evicted from your home, that that filing stays on your record, and that there are very significant barriers to finding new housing if you have eviction filing on your record. And so now we've created a situation where a very large percentage of our population in, in our neighborhoods in North Minneapolis are, are really at risk for not being able to find housing in the future. And the Council President maybe wanted to make a comment or question about that.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and your point is really very poignant. And, yeah, I, I think part of this, and this was a stunning number to me too when I first heard this, that we have, part of the problem is we have landlords that this is their business practice, that they, and, and the Innovation Team has done work to show that these numbers are created by, in many cases, a relatively small number of landlords. And so I, I mean, for us, it's a real lesson as a city about our regulatory authority. So, thank you.
If there are any additional questions on that, I'll be glad to hand it over to Brian to talk a little bit about our housing supply.
Chair Bender, Councilmembers, I'm quickly just going to go spend some time talking about a brief overview of the discriminatory housing policies that have existed and their influence on the city's development patterns. And then there's a quick follow-up on that conversation about our housing supply. I think Michael has given you a really great understanding of what people are currently experiencing, and maybe what they have experienced in the not-too-decent or far past. But to kind of think about that a little longer distance is really the lasting impacts of the discriminatory housing policies that, that have been in place. And we have a long history of these policies that have shaped areas of opportunity and shaped where and how our cities developed. Some of these are much more overt, these were the racially restrictive covenants that exist. And we'll talk a little bit about that work. Some of these are a little less overt, more about just the regular way of that some areas of the city were subdivided and built out more through the private market and the kind of ability of zoning and other kind of just building influences that shaped that. The most, obviously, as I said, the most overt and probably most clearly pointable is the racially restrictive covenants that existed. These were in effect between 1910 and 1968 Minneapolis. These have been, I would say, the longest-practiced elements. These were reinforced by federal programs in the 1930s. And just to give you an idea, between 1910 and 1968, about 65% of this current city housing stock was built. It should be mentioned that a lot of the restrictive covenants were also placed back on homes after they were constructed, so it's not just when they were constructed, but just to give you that idea of the scale of that practice. Really building off some work that's been really helpful from the University of Minnesota and the University of Minnesota's Mapping Prejudice Project is their work on trying to map these restrictive covenants.
I think that's Augsburg.
Augsburg, thank you.
Yeah. It's, it's a project of Historyopolis, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to make sure since, they were, they were just part of my program that we're giving proper credit to who's, who's steering the work.
Chair Bender, Councilmember Goodman, thank, or Councilmember Glenn, thank you. Again, so there, they looked at about, so far as of March, about 20% of the city. In that process, on this map, you see there's blue and red. Those are both the areas they've looked at. Anything that doesn't have blue and red means they haven't looked at it yet. So there's still about four-fifths of the city that hasn't been examined. They found 4,500 racial restrictive covenants, those are red on this map. And you can see where those are across the city. We'll take another look at those in just a second.
Councilmember Glenn?
Thanks. Well, maybe I'll just add this in now, but I just wanted to say, you know, so this is a really interesting project that is, that is happening, the Mapping Prejudice Project, which you can Google, and I just say that because their intent is to map the entire city. And any resident can go on their website, and it is very easy to volunteer to help do the work to be able to cover the entire city. But I just wanted to point out that, you know, our information only goes so far, and there are many other things that have led to the, the fact that people of color, people of Jewish descent, have been segregated in our city into living in a very, very small area of the city. And so just to name a couple of other things, of course, steering practices of realtors, and also just white residents who may not have had an actual restrictive covenant on their deed, but refused to sell to people of color. And I will just tell you that I have heard many stories from, from residents about trying to purchase property and not being able to purchase property, people of color being able to purchase, black residents in particular, being able to purchase property from, from white residents, or trying to use unique techniques such as paying in cash over the purchase price to be able to kind of overcome those things. So I just want to say, this only takes us so far in understanding what was happening, because the racial covenants were just one piece of that.
Chair Bender, Councilmember Glenn, thank you for adding that, and it's, I really appreciate that. I think I should also note that during this time, the city's developing itself, and we have a pattern of single-family homes. And a lot of that subdivision also included minimum cost for that home to be constructed. So the homes couldn't be, you know, from 1910 and 1905, had minimum construction cost of $5,000 in minimum lot sizes, that also exacerbated some of the segregation of both class and wealth and race. And these items are not, as you said, these are not just a singular thing to point at, but a large collection of policies that have shaped that and practices that have shaped that. Just to put this on a map, then, what you see in the blue and the shading is concentrations are populations of color. And where the restrictive covenants are, are areas typically where still pretty much predominantly white households. Kind of shifting gears and moving up, we're highlighting just a few of these points, not all of the elements have contributed to this. But looking at the kind of the Great Depression and the kind of the federal practices coming out of the Great Depression, which included FHA underwriting manuals, which reinforce the need for, or the desire for racially restrictive covenants, having zoning that segregated both by use and type, and also natural barriers, everything from building walls to using natural barriers to prevent, to protect their investments, if you will, in underwriting loans. That was when we shifted loans from what we consider a conventional loan today, which is a 30-year loan or a longer-term loan with a, a small down payment. And these practices have significant impacts in both creating areas of opportunity and also creating kind of areas of disinvestment. What you see on the screen is the HULC map, these are the federal home loan, owned loan corporation maps. These are created in the 1930s and '05 and used through about 1940. The colors mean B and C and D, which are yellow and red, are the areas where they really advise against investments and underwriting loans. And then areas of A and B were better areas where they felt that those were okay to underwrite loans. Again, this was really predicated on the idea that the federal government was underwriting a longer-term investment and that taking on that risk. And they put out these maps and to help guide that. It should be noted that there's a lot of literature stating that these maps came out towards the end of the program, and these aren't the only definitive element of representing that. But they do kind of serve as an embodiment of a lot of the practices to, the Councilmember Glenn mentioned, of these practices that have led to the development patterns we have today, and especially the patterns of where our populations and demographics are. So together, all these different housing policies became ensconced in our development patterns, whether they be implied through certain types of underwriting, which allowed us to have different types of subdivisions in growth, or also how, just how areas of opportunity were allowed and where we maybe had, couldn't get loans for areas, and we might have seen changes in that housing stock. So kind of taking that lens and moving that towards a little bit of a, what does it look like today and how does it manifest itself, is starting to talk about how our distribution of our city looks like. Where can you live in a multifamily unit in the city of Minneapolis today? And this map demonstrates all the units that you could, that are available in the city of Minneapolis, all the units that exist that are greater than three units. So not looking at the duplexes and single-family homes, but literally looking at where is, what I would consider three or four units and above. The different dots obviously didn't indicate the different size, and there's a lot of detail here. But I think the, the idea is you can see a pattern of, of where those units are and where those units are. And I'm an Armitage resident, and I want to point out, my neighborhood has six buildings that are multifamily, so 5% of the housing units in that neighborhood are, have are multifamily, or, or three units or more, and the Kenny neighborhood has none. So just to give an example of where those opportunities are, this gets to the opportunities of lifecycle housing, opportunities to mobility and have different opportunities and housing choice throughout the city. An inverse of that, a little bit more stark, and is where neighborhoods where 70% or more of the housing units, not the housing stock, but the housing units are single-family home. So you can see, as I mentioned before, Armitage and Kenny are highlighted here, but there's a lot of other parts of the, of the city of Minneapolis where the predominant housing stock is single-family. And that goes back to this concept of when we started to see the flooding of single-family homes and use, use racially restrictive covenants, those are significantly used on single-family homes and less on multifamily. So again, in creating those opportunities and shaping those patterns of growth. And then to think about today, where we, how that inflates, and not only the development pattern that we have existing, but how are we moving that development pattern forward, is this is a current map of the zoning that would allow for a three or larger, three-year unit or more building being built in the city of Minneapolis. So all the areas in pink are areas that where we'd allow those three units. So the kind of, if you just cycle back through, you can kind of just see there's an overlap of all those as they come through. So again, this gets to those opportunities of housing, housing opportunities and housing diversity in different parts of the city, creating areas of opportunity or access to those opportunities, and also just everything from lifecycle housing to other options within a city.
Councilmember Glenn?
You know, I, I have a, another question on, but maybe I'll just wait to the end of the question. It's, it's more on the, the tenant end of things. So we had this one slide that was about the very important and dramatic report done by our city staff on evictions. But I don't know that we have a good set of information, so I just want to throw this out there, on kind of what happens at the front end of when people are trying to rent a property. So I know there have been some slices of that information. I just say that because that was part of the information that was gathered primarily due to HomeLine around the Section 8 work. But, you know, just another issue that has been brought up in other contexts, including in our Intergovernmental Relations Committee, is talking about credit and how many property owners today appear to be utilizing credit in a whole variety of ways. I've heard of, of a, of a resident told me her story, and she was not selected for an apartment even because she didn't have a credit rating in the 800s, in the 800s. So, and, so anyway, I just, I don't know if this is a question for you or Andrea, but have we done that look at some of these other issues that are essentially the barriers to getting even into a property if, if you are so lucky to find one that is affordable to you?
Chair Bender, Councilmember Glenn, I think we can probably talk about that later on in the presentation. I think we have some slides that kind of start to address that a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm going to switch gears slightly, not incredibly far, but just looking at the housing units and locations. So kind of taking a different look at the city based on what kind of units we have. So where are the one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, three-bedrooms, and four-bedrooms within the city? But this is all based on our Assessor data, just to be clear. And just, this gives you a breakdown. I know the map is hard to read, we're going to go through it in segments. So to look at it from a studio perspective, this is where the studios exist in the city of Minneapolis based on our Assessor information. And it's not a surprise that most of those are in multifamily housing. I think the 77 in single-family housing might be some data anomalies, and maybe just odd housing types as we move forward. As you move forward into one-bedrooms, you can kind of see a larger distribution of one-bedroom units across the city. You can still see that multifamily really is the predominant place for where we have or one-bedroom units. But you can also see areas of the city where we don't really have a lot of that opportunity for those smaller units being one- and two-bedrooms, especially some of those other areas I highlighted previously. There's, you can start to see some gaps. Moving on to two-bedrooms, you kind of see this, it's a little easier to find a two-bedroom unit just that it exists, whether or not it's accessible, throughout the entire part of the city. Again, there's about 61,000 of those units, 41,000 of those are multifamily. One of the important things we start talking about is, again, this distribution of housing units in different parts of the area. So again, one- and two-bedrooms kind of representing ideas for smaller, smaller households, individual households, and those opportunities for people maybe age in their community and downsize, and also opportunities for just affordability perhaps, and different living arrangements. As you move into this larger units, you kind of see that all of a sudden just start to switch. This is, again, probably not a surprise, but we have a lot many, many more larger units in three-bedroom and four-bedroom units in single-family homes than we do in multifamily. And you can see that distribution throughout the city downtown. You can see the, some of the buildings with three- and four-bedroom units, including the townhomes up there on the river in the North Loop. One of the key things that we've been talking, that have been talked about a lot is having larger bedrooms or larger unit sizes and more bedrooms for multi-generational living and just larger families and where we have those opportunities. And it should be noted, looking at the data, is that 40% of our, so we have about 12,000 three- or four-bedroom multifamily units, and 40% of those, 40% of that 12,000, roughly about almost 5, 4,500, are in duplexes. So the majority, or good portion, the largest portion of our three- and four-bedroom and rental families are actually, or in rental property and multifamily property, are in duplexes and triplexes, or just duplexes, excuse me, which just gives an idea of what kind of maybe the importance of that type of housing stock for multi-generational families and larger families, at least what we have today, not necessarily going forward. So with that, I can kind of end my part. So if there's any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, I'll bring Andrea up and move forward. up and move forward.
Mr. Shaver, do you have this data broken down by rental versus owner housing as well?
We can, yes. We've, we can break it down by multifamily, and we can also probably break it down by rental licensing and homesteaded properties. It's a different, it looks a little bit differently, but it's still pretty much reflective of that larger multifamily, or larger process. Thanks.
Thank you. So we're at a point in the presentation where we're going to shift gears from a presentation of data and analysis to more of solutions and proposals that staff have been working on. I wanted to just pause since we dove right in to get on track. We're, I think we're doing well for time. I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm chairing this meeting, which we organized closely together with Councilmember Goodman. The two of us chair the committees that see a lot of the housing work, the Community Development and Regulatory Service Committee, that she chairs, and the Zoning and Planning Committee, which I chair, with a lot of support from Council Vice President, who's in charge of study sessions, Councilmember Glenn. And I wanted to note, we have here today Councilmember Kano, Council President Johnson, Councilmember Quincy, Councilmember Frye, and Councilmember Pomisano. And again, I know many of our colleagues who were able to make it are deeply involved in this work and really interested in it. I wanted to summarize just a couple of things that came up, which were questions for further development, looking at affordability and reasons for the affordability differences between Minneapolis and the surrounding communities, including St. Paul. We talked about looking more deeply into the homeownership impacts of the foreclosure crisis and the long-term impacts of that. We talked about wanting to have more information about why we're seeing so many more national buyers buying up multifamily properties in the city. And there was some good comments and questions about access and barriers to housing that aren't captured in our data. And I also just wanted to say that all of us as councilmembers hear stories from our constituents, and that piece, that human piece of the housing, what I would say is a mounting housing crisis in many of our neighborhoods in the city, is really, I think, captured in some part by the data, but we know that those day-to-day stories of our constituents go much deeper, and that the data is just one piece of the way that we can understand the stories of the people who are trying to find housing and stay in their housing in their communities. So I'll pause there and see if any of my colleagues have any comments or questions on the data portion before we switch over to the recommendations. Okay, I don't see any, so then we'll bring Ms. Brennan up to go into this next phase.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair members of the council. So we thought it was very important to present the context within which the city is obligated to, to address fair housing issues. If there are fair housing issues, the city is obligated to do what it can to try to eliminate them. And to that end, the city, in collaboration with other jurisdictions in the regional, in the region, commissioned a fair housing study from Mosaic Community Planning Group. It's a group that is based in Atlanta. This study looked at zoning policies, regulation for its impact on either affirmatively furthering fair housing or, or creating some potential barriers or impediments. So I'm going to present the summary of this work and also spend some time on, a fair amount of time on the recommendations that came out of it, and talk about the work that is currently underway in addressing a lot of these recommendations. This work, as I mentioned, was commissioned as a region. It's a regional analysis, and it was commissioned by the Fair Housing Implementation Council, or the FIC. This group is made out of, made up of county and city governments in the metropolitan area. It includes the seven metro counties, as well as the cities that you see listed here. A regional analysis of impediments was prepared in 2014. It is required by HUD to be done every five years, but this analysis became the subject of a complaint to HUD alleging that the analysis and its findings were deficient. To resolve the complaint, Minneapolis and St. Paul entered into a voluntary compliance agreement with HUD and the complainants agreeing to update the study. The addendum builds off of the 2014 addenda or analysis, and specifically looks at issues of race and ethnicity segregation and integration. The study was heavily informed by new HUD regulation that was released in 2015. And this HUD regulation requires more in-depth analysis on geospatial concepts such as measures of segregation, integration, looking at areas of concentrated poverty, and looking at indicators of opportunity. Elements of the analysis are listed here. Most of these analyses we covered separately through Brian and, and Michael's presentation, so I'm not going to repeat them here. What I'm going to focus on are the elements that weren't covered previously, and that includes zoning code reviews and low-income housing tax credit policies. The status of this addendum is that it was completed and submitted to HUD by the June 15th deadline set forth in the voluntary compliance agreement. We have received a letter from HUD where they state they have determined that this addendum does meet the requirements of the VCA. And the future implications of this work is that the city is, is obligated to take meaningful action to overcome the impediments that are identified. And this involves a typical housing finance, community development tools that we have, employing them to this end, but also involves citywide coordination related to comprehensive planning, planning and zoning, city investments, basically any and all policies that could have an impact on, on fair housing choice. In addition to citywide collaboration requires a significant, continued, because it's happening already, but continued and expanded coordination with other agencies, including Minneapolis' Public Housing Authority. When we do this analysis again in 2018, we are required to do that with MPHA, Hennepen County, Minneapolis Public Schools, Metropolitan Councils, and others. Additionally, expectations moving forward is that this type of analysis will include robust community engagement. What is affirmatively furthering fair housing? The definition here is listed in green, that is the HUD definition. And what it means is that the city is obligated to take actions that do a number of things. One, address disparities in housing need and access to opportunities that the actions replace, that really promote integrated and balanced living patterns, actions that improve access to opportunity, particularly for households, residents living in areas of poverty, and where the majority of households are people of color, and to foster and maintain compliance with civil rights and fair housing law. Historical narrative was covered. The consultants looked at 22, they reviewed and assessed 22 zoning ordinances in the metropolitan area against six common fair housing issues. Those fair housing issues are outlined in green on the screen. The zoning assessment was then given a risk score of low, medium, or high. High being that there, there is likely an impediment to fair housing, low meaning it's likely an action that is a low risk of impediment, or is actually affirmatively furthering fair housing and being proactive in doing so. The city received a low-risk score on many of these issues, including exclusionary zoning, multifamily units, alternative housing units. And the city of Minneapolis was specifically mentioned in several best practices, including having the ability to develop multifamily, high density by right in, in several areas of the city, having a small minimum lot size, having, allowing for ADUs and modular homes as alternative housing units, and reduce parking near transit. The city received a medium-risk score, which means that the city could improve in this area to more proactively support fair housing issues in the areas of inclusionary zoning incentives. And the city was recognized for having a density bonus, but the study also recognized that the density bonus is not well, is not utilized very often, and could be that the city should consider improving it. The, the medium-risk score was also connected to the recommendation that the city could promote longer-term affordability in connection with affordable housing. The city received a high-risk score, meaning that there, there could be potential to result in, in discriminatory or limit, limit fair housing choice related to its definition of family in the zoning code. And this definition defines the number of unrelated people that can live in a unit. The, the, the study found that that was overly restrictive, and the city should consider a more flexible definition, as well as a high-risk score related to design and performance guidelines. And the specific recommendation there is that the city review its design and performance guidelines and for its potential to increase costs of development of affordable housing and consider some, some mitigation in that area. Another aspect of this analysis was to look at the regional distribution of tax credit developments. So these are, this map shows the distribution of affordable housing units in all of the properties developed or preserved with low-income housing tax credits since 1987 by Census Tract. It also shows in the shading, the distribution of all rental housing, and in the pink areas shows the ACP areas of concentrated poverty where 50% of the households are people of color. Over the last 30 years, the tax credit developments have been developed in all seven counties in the metropolitan area. 32,000 units have been created, 55% of them in the central cities, Minneapolis and St. Paul. This compares to 40% of the renters in the region living in Minneapolis and St. Paul. This slide shows the distribution of tax credit developments in, in the city of Minneapolis. Most units are in or around the downtown neighborhoods of Marcy Homes, Cedar Riverside, Seward, Elliott Park, Loring Park, Downtown West, and this grouping mirrors the overall distribution of rental housing in these areas. There are some neighborhoods, such as Como, West Calhoun, Echo, Carrig, that have higher shares of rental housing, but few tax credit units. And then there are fewer tax credit units in most north and south neighborhoods because there's less multifamily housing overall. The other thing I wanted to point out in this slide, it's a little bit difficult to read, but then the, the green dots show the 9% tax credit developments, and the, there's a, it's important to distinguish between 9% tax credits and 4% tax credits. 9% tax credits are allocated on an annual basis through a highly competitive RFP process, and the selection criteria that the city sets forth is very important and influential in determining where tax credit developments are located. 4% credits are allocated in connection with the issuance of tax-exempt bonds, and the city has a lot less control over where those projects are located. So of the 9% tax credit developments, 60% are what is now, again, we didn't go back and look at what, whether or not they, those areas qualified as an area of concentrated poverty at the time the award was made, but 60% are what is now ACP 50 area. And, but the vast majority of those units were for preservation of existing affordable housing that was there, so preservation and substantial rehabilitation. Only six, only 37% of, of new construction in, was for new construction in those, in those higher poverty areas. And that share of new construction going into higher poverty areas dropped pretty significantly after 2007, when the city adopted a policy to prioritize the development of new construction of tax credit developments outside of, of these areas. All of the elements we've previously discussed and the data resulted in some fair housing issues that were identified by the consultants. And in addition to what we presented, there was also a community engagement component to this work. There were 17 community-based organizations that provided input. They did outreach through their networks. They worked with diverse cultural constituencies, about 800, estimated 800 residents regionally had input into this work. 68% of them are renters, and about half of them had incomes under $25,000 a year. So the issues that were identified, there are eight of them. One, there is a need for expanded distribution of affordable housing across the region. Two, regulation policies funding availability matters in terms of where affordable housing gets developed. Three, access to housing is reduced for racial, some racial and ethnic groups. Four, fair housing enforcement and education is a continued need. Five, how residents value neighborhoods and housing is multifaceted. The notion of areas of opportunity and areas of concentrated poverty aren't as, didn't play out as significantly in the engagement piece as, as it does in, in some of the more regulatory language. Six, residential patterns reflect segregation and differing access to opportunity factors by race and ethnicity. Seven, areas of concentrated poverty require coordinated place-based investments to increase opportunity for residents. And eight, gentrification and displacement causes a loss of affordability and is a fair housing issue. The, the study recommends, both the study as well as the HUD regulation, they recommend and direct a balanced approach to fair housing. What does a balanced approach mean? It means that the priority for new construction of affordable housing should be in areas with access to opportunity, and that opportunity is defined by the communities that, by each community, and different communities have different definition for what, what opportunity means. Priority for preservation and new construction should be where gentrification is believed to be occurring. New construction of affordable housing in areas of concentrated poverty, particularly where 50% of the residents are people of color, should be considered as part of a comprehensive community investment strategy to address targeted needs. And targeted means, again, means needs that have been identified by the community. Enforcement of fair housing laws and effort to prevent housing discrimination are, are key, are critical to this work. The study recommends 10 goals to address these issues. I'm going to go through all of them individually. Here they all are. And within these goals, there are 54 specific recommendations. The city is not required, and this is very clearly stated in HUD's letter to us, the city is not required to adopt any of the specific recommendations. The city is required to examine its land use, zoning policies, tax credit, and other programs in light of the findings here, and to take what action we deem appropriate to make sure that our policies affirmatively further fair housing. And this doesn't just apply to us, it applies to all of the FIC participants.
Councilmember Glenn.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And that was something, I just want to make sure I'm kind of getting clear for myself and just to kind of understand what's on here is, so the recommendations and the goals listed, they were developed as part of this process that included the community organizational members or whatever, as applying to the entire region, am I right? And were there any recommendations that were identified as more or less applicable to different cities or counties that participated? So I just, I say this not to say that maybe Minneapolis, even though we don't quote "have to" do all these recommendations, maybe every single one of them is one that we need to implement or figure out how that goes, but certainly we are a different community than, say, the city of St. Louis Park or whatever it is. And so were there any, was there any prioritization that fit more to certain cities or counties that participated in the regional analysis?
Chair Bender, Council Vice President Glenn, absolutely yes. The, the recommendations are, there are some recommendations that are general and apply to everybody. There are some that are very specific to individual cities, counties, or public housing authorities. There are some that are specific to being addressed as a region, and some that can be addressed individually as, as, in individual jurisdictions, so yes.
So when you, when you identified for us earlier in this report, those, I think your language that was used was the high-risk, high-risk items for the city, those were specific to the city of Minneapolis, so those would sort of be our priority recommendations? Is that how I should do that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so we would also be able to see what are the priority recommendations for all the other participating communities in the report? for all the other participating communities in the report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I can refer you to the, the analysis, the addendum actually, which is located. There's a link that we'll get to in a minute. But the, it actually includes the, the individual assessment of the 22 zoning ordinances that they reviewed. So that's in the appendix, so anyone can go on Ramsey County website and look, look up and see specifically what those recommendations were.
Just, and again, I'm sorry to kind of keep droning on here, but I just, you know, want to fit that with, you know, the fact that you had is this statistic in there that the, was it cities of Minneapolis, St. Paul, host 40% of the rental community in the entire region? Did I read that right? Okay. And, and yet, when you were giving us the trend information for the, for the region, it talks about, you know, kind of, the national trend is that we're seeing more renters than homeowners and so forth. So anyway, I just trying to put this in perspective of what's going on in the region as well as what we need to focus on in the city of Minneapolis.
So the rest of this presentation, I'm going to spend walking through these 10, these 10 goals and talking about the, the work that's currently underway to address these goals and the recommendations. I'm also going to highlight some of the recommendations where it's work that we could choose to, to add on to our list. I really think it's important here to point out that of these 54 recommendations, the city of Minneapolis is actively working on the vast majority of them. Either actively working on or has already done a lot of the recommendations that are here. Goal number one is to improve opportunities for mobility within the region. Renter households with Section 8 voucher, housing choice vouchers or attempting to access public housing may face barriers to mobility within the region. So this recommendation really focuses on the mobility of residents with housing choice vouchers and those wanting to access public housing, not just within each jurisdiction, although within each jurisdiction, but also throughout the region. The city's non-discrimination ordinance, the city of Minneapolis was specifically called out as a best practice and something that all of the other jurisdictions should try to adopt as well. And then work underway here, I just wanted to point out that, that earlier this year, the council was presented with recommendations from a recently completed study on enhancements that the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority could do to expand choice and mobility. And they will be reporting back to the council later this year on progress that has been made on this front. Some of this is listed, listed on this slide. They've made significant progress so far. And another, another thing that I wanted to point out is, is our ability to strategically acquire affordable housing sites, such as the site at 54th and Riverview Road in, in South Minneapolis. The city acquired the site, partnered with MPHA to develop additional public housing for large families that are currently experiencing homelessness. So that's another example of how we can help improve opportunities for, for mobility within our own jurisdiction.
Just quickly, first I wanted to note, we have 10 of these and about 40 minutes left. I think in order to make sure we have both time to hear them all and robust conversation from council members, I think I'll let staff pretty, like, give your presentation of each slide and then take questions on each one. So Council President has a question on that last slide?
Just a curiosity, Ms. Brennan, when you showed the map of the low-income housing tax credits, was part of our report the location of Section 8 units across the city to the, to this fair housing report?
Chair Bender, Council President Johnson, I, I believe, I'm not, yes. The short answer is yes. Is the, the location of Section 8 housing choice voucher participants and their choices and whether or not there are limitations on those was part of this report. And so recommendations to expand that were in this.
Thank you.
Ms. Brennan, could you also just really briefly touch on the landlord incentive fund and the status of workaround incentives?
Sure. The city, so the Housing Division and CPAD and Regulatory Services has been working with MPHA. The city has authorized funding to support a landlord incentive fund that could provide support, financial support for landlords that are choosing to rent to Section 8 housing choice voucher holders. And that financial support could come in the form of, in the event that there's any damage to a unit that's not covered by a security deposit, potentially a first-time rent, you know, renting to a first-time voucher holder incentive. And then some potential financial assistance if there's any rent loss that happens as a result of, of renting to a Section 8 voucher holder. Goal number two is to reduce resident displacement. The recommendations here, again, there are multiple recommendations, but just summarized, to research and evaluate policy initiatives aimed at maintaining tenant occupancy and affordability and to develop policy and tools to preserve and rehab existing housing. I will spend a little bit more time on this one than the others just because there's, there's a tremendous amount of work that is happening right now in this area that the city is engaged in. As, as talked about earlier, the city innovation team has been very involved in research around issues of evictions. We've been working with, partnering with the Family Housing Fund and others, a regulatory services group to look at whether or not there's any intersection between high number, high filers of eviction and tier-three property owners, properties that may have physical conditions. And looking to see if there's, if there's, if there could be expanded use of tenant remedies actions. These are, this is all work that's, that's currently underway. Other work that's underway that doesn't directly involve the city, but the city's following and supporting is Housing Court Pilot Project, which is involving Hennepin County, the Housing Court and philanthropy to look at whether or not there could be earlier interventions to help prevent evictions before they happen. The city has legislative policy position that supports anything that would, funding and policy that would help reduce evictions. There's been an introduction to work on an advanced notice, notice. And what an advanced notice ordinance would do is it would require property owners of naturally occurring affordable housing to give the city notice if they intend to sell their property within, within a 90-day period. And what that would do is it would allow organizations who are out there interested in acquiring and competing for these properties, an opportunity to prepare a bid and compete and try to acquire these properties and maintain and preserve affordability. The, a couple of things that we've moved forward and requested in the 2018 budget. One is additional funding to support the acquisition and funding for these naturally occurring properties that are at risk of being sold and that need immediate repairs. And then also funding proposal in the budget to continue to support important work like a tenant hotline to get information about, and referrals about rights, their tenant rights, as well as to fund some additional legal services to help tenants enforce those rights. Goal number three, increase access to homeownership. There are recommendations here specifically to address the disparity rate between white and people of households in homeownership. Again, there's a significant amount of work that is underway here at the city, both that we're working on as well as through our participation in the homeownership opportunity in Minneapolis, which is a regional effort chaired with, by Minnesota Home Ownership Center and Minnesota Housing and involving private industry. The city, the city also has identified down payment assistance as well as grants that help support community-based organizations that do capacity building, financial counseling and homeownership readiness with low-income residents and residents of color. The, and the city has expanded its support for community land trust and other long-term affordability models. And has also committed funds in the 2017 budget to help support additional development of affordable homes on, on infill lots. It's important to note here that there is, you know, research in this area indicates that some of the factors that lead to this disparity include lower mortgage loan application rates among people of color, higher loan denial rates, less resources for down payment assistance, steering subprime inferior loan products activity and, and higher foreclosure rates. So a continued work that we're doing here in improving the disparity rate in homeownership. Work to do, that's work that the, the study recommended includes just, you know, continuing to look at innovative models such as lease-to-purchase and considering to additional homeownership options, including long-term affordability. Goal number four, to expand affordable housing funding. And this, this recommendation is specific really to local, local jurisdictions using local funding to support affordable housing as well as state resources to fund affordable housing and identifying new tools that currently don't exist. So the recommendation is to use something other than federal funds. And, and that is not something that, that all jurisdictions around the metropolitan area do. The city, as you all know, has long supported the use of local funding for affordable housing. In the 2017 budget, there's 12 million of local, local city discretionary dollars that have been budgeted to affordable housing work. The city also supports, is a supporting member of the Homes For All Coalition at the Capitol advocating for more state funding for affordable housing every year. And the city has changed policies in the last year to extend the affordability required in connection with its financial assistance. Work to do that was mentioned in the report is to support a campaign strategy to, again, identify new sources of funds for, new dedicated sources of funds for affordable housing and specific to several of us to develop long-term affordability models for homeownership. Goal number five, improve fair and affordable housing planning. A serious and sustained effort to expand fair and affordable housing requires ongoing planning, research and capacity building. The recommendation here is to help develop this capacity at the local level through technical assistance, plan review, training, et cetera. It also focused on advanced analysis of zoning and gentrification and expanded opportunities for stakeholder participation. There's a lot of work underway in the, in the data research area of gentrification that the city is, is following very closely. This is happening at Cura and the Federal Reserve. Housing Justice Center has developed the database of the current location of, of tax credit developments. And they also, getting to an earlier question, have been tracking the expiration date of, of the affordability of legally, legally binded, bound affordable housing. Work to do here that was identified is to develop and deliver fair housing education and training programs for elected officials and staff. And this is something that, that the FIC is working on. It is something that really has, has regional applicability and something that we will support through the work of the FIC. Goal number six, expand locations of affordable housing. This recommend, this goal has specific recommendations around employing and modifying zoning code and regulatory tools to reduce impediments to affordable housing development. This, the work that, a lot of the recommendations here are, these, this falls into the category of recommendations that we've already adopted. So all of these are recommendations to a lot of other jurisdictions in the metro area that haven't yet adopted these things and the city of Minneapolis has.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to highlight the first couple items. And one of them is support appropriate density. And that especially applies to space that is not presently used or is underutilized. And noting that this is, is a plan to combat the affordable housing crisis that we presently have. Can you just explain a little bit more as to why that's the case? As to why we desperately need this housing so much, both affordable as well as market rate?
Sure. Chair Bender, Councilmember Frye. The, there is, I'm just thinking of what data points to bring up, but one of them is looking at vacancy rates, for example. So the overall rental vacancy rate in, in the region is, is 3%. It's much lower, it's 1% for affordable units. So there is a shortage, there's, there's more demand for rental units than there is supply right now. So that, that puts, you know, pressure on rents and, and creates shortages for people that need affordable housing. So, you know, adding more housing to the housing stock is something that can alleviate that, some of that pressure. We're growing, you saw the slides about the population growth. So we're growing and we need additional units in order to support that growth. I don't know if I'm answering your question.
Yeah, yeah, got it. Thank you.
Work to do here that was identified, one specific to Minneapolis is to reconfigure the density bonus, strengthen inclusionary housing policy, to look at ways to better promote mixed income housing through planning, zoning, approval and other incentives. Consider the impact of, of design and building material requirements on affordable housing goals and consider streamlining administrative processes. Goal number seven, institute effective and meaningful community engagement. To, recommendation here to allocate resources to fund effective and culturally appropriate community engagement around housing issues. The city funded a large portion of the community engagement that happened through this, this analysis of impediment addendum. And through the Minneapolis 2040 Comprehensive Planning Update Process, the city has developed a suite of engagement methods and activated them to, to expand meaningful dialogue with communities of color most impacted and low-income households most impacted by, by these issues. Recommendations in this area are to continue explore opportunities for amplifying community voices in planning decisions. Enhance engagements with communities of color regarding housing issues generally and improve coordination with school districts is another one. And that, what they mean by that specifically is to consider impacts of affordable housing development and public sector investments on segregation and integration of affected schools. Goal number eight, invest in place-based community improvements. And this gets at that balanced approach of invest, investing not just in one thing, like affordable housing, but having those investments be integrated with other investments. There is a tremendous amount of work underway at the city of Minneapolis in this area, so I'm not going to get into much detail here, other than to list off, we have Promise Zone activity. We've established green zones. We have a lot of targeted employment training focus. We have targeted resources specifically to areas that we think need more investment listed here. We have the Near North Strategic Framework, Green Homes North, Great Streets Programs, all of which are heavily targeted toward areas that need community revitalization. So work to do here, recommended, is to continue to use data and research, research to inform policy and investment and expand partnerships within community and organizations. Goal number nine, support multicultural housing needs. Recommendation to work with existing ethnic and cultural organizations to reach and interact with ethnic and culturally diverse population in appropriate ways. Work underway here, this is referenced, is stuff like the ADU ordinance, duplex minimum lot size, funding policy and selection points for both rental and homeownership projects serving large, multi-generational families. Work to do here, continue to work in partnership and disseminate fair housing information and resources. Finally, goal number 10, support residents' fair housing rights. Recommendations here involve work to prevent housing discrimination by supporting existing Recommendations here involve work to prevent housing discrimination by supporting existing organizations that provide fair housing education and enforcement, strengthen affirmative marketing requirements, and mitigate displacement that may occur as a result of code enforcement. Some work underway here, for the 2018 budget proposal, there is a request from Regulatory Services to hire two new housing inspection staff to work with tenants on habitability and safety concerns. The city continues to support the Mid-Minnesota Legal Aid Housing Discrimination Law Project. The city continues to fund and support fair housing testing through the FIC, and we've recently revised and strengthened our affirmative marketing requirements and the monitoring of that through our tax credit and housing trust fund programs. Recommended work to do here includes monitoring and provide financial support for the efforts of existing community-based organizations offering fair housing education. This concludes our prepared presentation, and any of us, including the staff, identified as resources are here to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Brennan, thank you very much for your report. I've had an opportunity to go through the analysis of impediments with you, so I probably had a little bit more information than most who are hearing it for the first time. So this was a regional analysis of impediments. We are a city that has leadership that is completely and unequivocally committed to doing right by tenants, producing affordable housing, maintaining and preserving it, and looking at every angle we can get at. I'm wondering what about all the other communities that participated in this analysis of impediments? I mean, if there's one thing that Myron Orfield got right, that is that everybody else is not doing their part. So it was good for us, as an exercise, to make sure we were on track, and that we were doing the right thing, and being a leader in doing the right thing, and we certainly have, as it pertains to the Section 8 ordinance, and the advance notice ordinance, and our look into expanding TRAs and looking at just cause eviction. But is anyone doing anything else? Are other cities that participated in this regional analysis even reviewing this with their elected officials and stakeholders? And I don't mean just St. Paul, but some of the suburbs are doing a few things here or there. I feel like we got dragged into this as a result of us doing too much and others not doing enough, and now what we're hearing is we're doing a good job, there's some areas for us to improve, and we want to do that. But what is everybody else doing? Housing is not a vacuum. And I feel like we're taking graciously and openly our fair share, and more than our fair share, because we believe in that as a city, and everybody else is saying, let Minneapolis do it. So I'm wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Sure. Chair Bender, Councilmember Goodman, I'll speak to a couple of points. One is that, just like the city of Minneapolis is obligated to address the fair housing impediments that were identified in this analysis, so are all of the jurisdictions that receive HUD funding. So they don't have to take, like we don't, they don't have to adopt any of the specific recommendations, but they are absolutely obligated to proactively try to address these barriers and to demonstrate and document that they are doing so. How much enforcement there will be from HUD on that issue, I can't speak to. On the issue of what is happening around the metropolitan area, I know that there is a lot of interest that we've been trying to coordinate with and make sure that we're tracking what's happening in some other cities. There are other cities in the metro area that are interested in things like advance notice, and we've been trying to make sure that we're talking to them, so we have an understanding of what they're doing, and they, we.
So not much. Not anything that you could get up and report, since we passed the Section 8 ordinance, these three cities are also doing that. Or since, I understand that there are some cities interested in working with us on advance notice, that's great, I love that. But I work in a lot of multi-jurisdictional ways through the Family Housing Fund and the Joint Minneapolis-St. Paul Housing Finance Board as well, and I'm just wondering, have you seen any other presentations on the analysis to fair housing?
Chair Bender, Councilmember Goodman, there are some, yes, there is some reporting back happening, the FIC jurisdictions are reporting back to their elected, their governing boards in various ways. In the analysis of impediments, there were best practices that were identified in other cities as well. There are other cities that have adopted inclusionary housing policies to promote more mixed income housing. There are, you know, there are cities and counties that are dedicating local resources to funding affordable housing. So those are the types of things that were specifically called out as being positive things. There are other cities, other suburban jurisdictions, that are allowing very high-density development to occur. And so, you know, there's just a range of different activity that's happening in different jurisdictions around the metro, some more than others. I'll leave it at that.
I'll just quickly note for my colleagues and folks who are here, that the three of us who organized the session today have distributed a staff direction to try to capture some of the work that we've heard about today, the data and analysis, but then really the recommendations that we just heard. And so our hope is to vote on this at the end of the session today, so I don't want to disrupt the conversation, but just wanted to highlight that again for my colleagues. This is directing staff to continue meeting. One of the great things that came out of this session is that we've had a group of staff from across the city enterprise, and at least three or four different departments meeting regularly. So we've asked them to continue meeting regularly and to work on finishing up some of the work that Ms. Brennan highlighted that's currently underway, that includes advance notice, work on flexibility of occupancy maximums, promotion of mixed income housing, a lot of work around the funding strategies and preservation of existing housing, work with tenant resource groups, including legal services, and getting more protections to renters and tenants in need, funding for housing inspection staff, and ongoing work that's part of our comprehensive plan update that will be adopted next year in 2018. And then we also highlighted and asked our staff to look more deeply into some new areas of work related to just cause eviction, incentives and disincentives that reduce evictions, those could be financial or regulatory, looking at policies like a first right of refusal to building sales for tenants, stronger enforcement of our existing tenant protection laws, targeted strategies for high eviction properties, strengthening conditions for rental licensing and use of tenant remedies actions. Again, much of this was captured in the presentation. And then including also the strategy we're pursuing for continuation of homeownership rehabilitation programs. There's been some change in that, so our staff is looking at ways to continue that work, financial and staff support to continue this work with our partners in the region, and continued analysis of the issues that were raised in this, particularly to racial and ethnic segregation in our city, and looking more deeply at work that will center the work of housing disparities between white households and households of color in our city. So that's the staff direction before us. I could see if Councilmember Frye had a comment or question earlier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the staff direction, I'm very supportive, and thank you to the three council member organizers for putting this on, and thank you to staff. This is an extremely comprehensive analysis here, and it touches on the complexity that is the affordable housing crisis, and the complexity that is our housing crisis in general. So three items I kind of wanted to touch on. The first was funding. No matter how you break it down, a lot of this stuff does come back to money. And in a time when we're losing our 4% and 9% low-income tax credits from the state, we're potentially losing a lot of the CDBG funding from the federal government, I do think that the city is going to have to step up to be more than just a final gap filler. I mean, traditionally speaking, we've provided $500,000. At the end of the day, once all of the other funders are lined up, maybe we provide a million bucks, if you're lucky. And I do think we're going to need to do significantly more than that, whether that's from the HRA levy, or that's from another source that we're hopefully committing to along with some of these other surrounding jurisdictions. It's going to need to happen, because these funding sources are drying up, and the city, if we really do value it, we're going to need to put our money where our mouth is in a bigger way. Second, we talked about placement of affordable housing, and I really appreciate that, because as we know, we've got a long history of concentrating the vast majority of Section 8 or affordable housing, or whatever it is, in North Minneapolis specifically, and in certain portions of South as well. What I appreciate is that the presentation recognized, one, the segregation that has happened throughout our city and throughout our history, but, two, recognized that we need affordable housing throughout the city, every area. Three, the HUD had come forward, I think it was HUD that had come forward with several recommendations in areas that are of great concern. The highest level concern that they had in terms of our city policy was our maximum occupancy, specifically applying to families. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the present maximum occupancy is three non-blood-related people. Is that right? So you can't have any more than three people that are not...
I may need to call Jason up here, but I believe it's three for units, one to four unit.
Okay.
And for larger multifamily developments, it could be more. It could be up to five unrelated individuals in multifamily buildings, or multifamily developments.
Okay, so depending on the makeup of the housing you live in, you cannot have more than either three or five people that are unrelated living in a home. That is relatively unique to our city. The vast majority of cities throughout the country have done away with this, and as you know, this contributes to the affordable housing crisis, because if you have a mansion with a ton of rooms in it, and only three people that are not blood-related can live there, that dramatically increases the price. Now, that's just an example, we encounter this everywhere, but that's something else that we do need to be looking at. And then fourth and finally is density. In addition to an affordable housing crisis, we also have a housing crisis, and that contributes to the lack of affordability in our city. And we need to recognize collectively that density and increasing the supply and stock of housing in our city does aid in affordability, especially if it's on underutilized parcels. You know, we talk about climate change a lot, and at a certain point, you have a consensus where 99% of the scientists all say the climate change is happening and it's due to man. Well, if you look at all of the statistics out there, at a certain point, we have to recognize that we have a housing crisis, and at least part of it is due to a lack of supply. I mean, I think we are moving in that direction, but it's just a fact that really is, I don't think can be disputed.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Frye. Council President Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm listening to my colleagues, and I just want to make sure that whatever we, however direction we move in, we don't exacerbate the challenges that are already existing in neighborhoods that have a concentration of poverty right now. And the other point I want to make is, you know, when you talk about people living in a mansion, it isn't going to be the mansion that's going to have more than three unrelated people, it's going to be a single-family home where many, many unrelated people live, because that's where the need is, and that's where the actual units are available. It's not going to be the mansion. So the other thing I want to point out, too, is when we talk about putting additional resources, city resources, into development of affordable housing, we have to remember that along with that goes increased property taxes. And property taxes are part of the picture that make our city perhaps more unaffordable than places that surround us. We have higher taxes than communities around us. So again, this is a regional problem. You know, if we're putting a whole bunch of city dollars and have raised our levy 3%, it impacts people who can least afford to pay that extra property tax, and it makes us, again, off-kilter with communities that surround us that are, as some of my colleagues pointed out, doing nothing. So the challenge for us is to find a balance, it seems to me, in trying to do something about the challenges that people experience trying to find a place to live in this city when the whole market is increasing, but then not exacerbating some of the problems that we have right now with segregation in our city. We have an extremely, extremely segregated city. I've lived here my whole life, and it just, it stuns me that we have public schools in this city that might have, you know, 5% of kids that are kids of color, and we have schools that are 95% kids of color. That's obscene. That's obscene. And we tolerate it, and we, you know, ignore it, we make our housing choices based on those kinds of decisions. And it's hypocrisy in many, many cases at its best. So let's not, whatever we do, let's not make the problem worse.
Thank you. Councilmember Clinton?
Thanks, Madam Chair, and I appreciate, this was a huge amount of work by staff. I mean, I don't mean, you have been doing a tremendous amount of work over a city of like an amount of time, but just to be able to collect this and present it to us so we can be able to kind of put our arms around what's sort of the body of work that's been happening, I really appreciate. I also want to say that I appreciate that this list of work underway and work to do is quite extensive, and I will say, there's probably some things that are not even fully baked into that, of course. And I think that we need to really examine what's the resource that is there to be able to work through these things, both the policy, how we best use resources, the, kind of all the different areas of work. And so I think that's in part going to be a budget area question, but also just how is the work shared amongst departments? I think some of the work, there's some questions about where does the work lie? I don't want to lose this piece that, to be quite blunt, work on tenant issues has not been a focus of the city for a long time. This is a newer area of work and shifting of how we're approaching the work, and I really appreciate, I think it was some of the work of the innovation team originally being invited by Regulatory Services to partner with that department, to help them kind of reevaluate what's the balancing of our work, so that we are more balanced between looking at what are the issues facing tenants as opposed to issues facing property owners and owners of property around multifamily properties. And so this has really been a shifting of the work, including adding the Section 8 anti-discrimination ordinance. And so I think we need to continue to look at what are those items that are both the resource items and the policy items that need to go in to continue to balance how are we working on behalf of all the different stakeholders in the city? And so I wanted to call that out. I do think, too, that there are going to be very significant issues around resources, how much resource, how are we able to increase our resource, frankly, at a time when federal resources are not resources that we can depend on, and that we're continuing to look at what will happen with CDBG funds and other things that have been a traditional source of how we devote resource that comes to the city to housing, including primarily new affordable housing production as well as the preservation. So anyway, great report, I really appreciate the work. I think it is good to get the work out there in a way that the public can feel, can access the work more, including ask questions about why are these the priorities today, where are we going, and things like that. So I think this was an important presentation, and it's really part of a continuation, I think, of stakeholder work and continued publicizing of where are we at and where should we be going.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you and Councilmember Glidden for all of the work that you've put into trying to get this focused. This is a very large issue, and the more people involved in trying to create policies surrounding it, the better. I want to note that the city's not a housing developer. That's not what we do. Our job is to partner with all of the people who are providing housing around our community, developers, owners of naturally occurring affordable housing, community developers... developers, owners of naturally occurring affordable housing, community development corporations, neighborhood organizations, working on these kinds of things. And we have to constantly remind ourselves that we're very, one very small piece of the pie. And so anytime we tip the apple cart in one direction, we're going to have an unintended consequence. So I want to encourage us to continue to hold the hands of those that work with us very tightly and not determine who the good guys and bad guys are. What we're trying to do is work on behalf of people who live in our city, and when they are unjustly removed from their housing for no reason other than it's being purchased, we need to go to our friends at HomeLine or the Housing Justice Center. We need to follow up with our partners at community development corporations who help preserve this housing. But we need to also convince those that own naturally occurring affordable housing, who love their tenants, that there are other ways forward other than marking up to market rate, while working with developers to continue to increase the supply. We have the ability as government to tie all of the pieces together in a really good way, and I would urge us not to point fingers at who's not doing what they're supposed to be doing. I asked a bunch of rhetorical questions to point out that we're doing a lot. And I won't point out the people that aren't doing their share, because in our community, I think a lot of people are doing a lot of things. Council President Johnson brought up the property tax issue. Here, here, I completely agree with you. It's not just the cost of adding additional design elements to buildings that's driving up the cost, it's also increasing property taxes without some sort of exemption for affordable. We're just going to see rents increase based on things we're doing, and we need to pay attention to that. But on the flip side, we need to pay attention to issues of occupancy and increasing density, an issue that I was not enthusiastic about 20 years ago, but have come to learn that it's a big piece of the larger puzzle. So I think everybody needs to do their fair share, and I would encourage us as a policy board and staff to continue to work with those partners that are actually doing the work, and let us remind ourselves that we're very, one very small piece of the larger puzzle, perhaps an important piece, but not any more important than the people who are putting their own money on the line every day, whether it be as a tenant or as a developer and investor in building in our housing stock. The solution to our criminal justice problem is safe, secure housing and a good living wage job. And since that seems to be the focus of the council, we should continue to focus on housing as a solution that will bring everybody up and have all votes rise.
Thank you. So just any other comments? Just in closing, before we take a vote on the staff direction, so I'll go ahead and move the staff direction. And then I just briefly want to thank staff so much again for your work in condensing years' worth of work into a two-hour presentation. We know so much of the work that you're doing goes well beyond the slides that you presented. I also want to note so many people in the room who are experts and bring so much value to this conversation, and if you don't see the thing that you think is what we really need to be doing reflected here today, we have an open door to talking and working with all of you continuing into the future. You've been important partners in the past, and we need to work together going forward. I feel a really deep sense of urgency to accelerate the work that we've been doing on housing stability in our community. When I talk to my colleagues across the country, I see so many cities that really miss the window of opportunity that we are in right now to stabilize housing in our community in a meaningful way. And I think that includes resources. I really appreciate Council President Johnson's comments about the balance between property tax increases and resources for housing. In my word, where 80% of people are renters, they don't often get a separate check, that's their property tax check, but it's passed on, of course, to all residents of our city. And so as we talk about more resources, I think we need to be really sure that we're doing, using that money well in ways that build wealth through land banking or homeownership programs that help build wealth in communities of color, as well as really get ahead of the fact that we're losing so many units now. I think we have an equal number of affordable units now in the market as we do that are protected, and I think we need to buy or finance as many of those as we possibly can now while we still can. And then I finally wanted to say that I think that the mapping work that the Long Range Planning Department and others have done is really helping us get to a more geographic approach to housing policy than we've had in the past. And as we hear questions from council members and see the maps, we see that our neighborhoods across the city, while we're all facing issues of housing stability, the solutions are really different in different parts of the city. And my hope is through the comprehensive plan that we'll adopt next year, that we'll be able to get to that finer grain of geographic strategies, that's, you know, how are we working to stabilize housing in these different parts of the city with different market pressures and issues? So thank you again so much to everyone who came today. I'll call for a vote on the staff direction. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, that carries. We are done right on time, and again, thanks so much to everyone who came. And we are adjourned.